Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things I wanted to go over.
We, uh, we have based it, uh, the Groundhog Sustainability Act, uh, implementation is received.
Uh, one and a half million dollars to assist in, uh, plan preparation. That will help go a long ways and not be a burden on landowners, but rather is a grant from the state of California that, uh, all Californians make happen. So that's a, that's a big win as we navigate through this process. Uh, tonight I will be, uh, attending to and speaking to, uh, the Farm Bureau Youth Leadership, uh, high school seniors and juniors in the, uh, Farm Bureau, uh, program, learning about various aspects of government, land use, et cetera. Uh, I will be joined this evening by, uh, Supervisor Sucklian, I guess. Um, and, uh, I don't know what she knows about agriculture, but it'll be nice to have her there anyways.
Golden State farmer, nineteen seventy-nine, Hanford High, FFA.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you very much.
All right. Welcome, welcome.
I know a lot.
Uh, good, good.
We know how well that worked out.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, and then also, uh, this week on Wednesday at eight-thirty in the morning will be a meeting of the Tulare County Employees Retirement Association Board, TESERA Board, I'll be, uh, serving on. Um, the Audit Committee meets this Thursday at ten o'clock, which I will not be attending, uh, because I will be in, uh, the wonderful state of Connecticut, um, on a due diligence trip for an international equity investment, uh, of a hundred million dollars being done by the Retirement Board. Um, and then lastly, uh, next week the Board will be in Washington DC for our federal advocacy trip. I look forward to a very productive trip that will, uh, produce, uh, hopefully some tangible results, uh, that we will be able to come away with, so. That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, um, I just wanted to-
Supervisor Sucklian.
Oh, I figured you were coming my way, you were looking this way, it was, I'm going. Um, last week was Healthy Tulare County Week. I want to thank, uh, all the staff with HHSA who did an incredible job. There was daily messaging about, uh, each component of Healthy Tulare County Week. Uh, I did an op-ed piece in the Times Delta, and then the, it culminated last Thursday in a health fair, uh, Hodges Community Center in London where over, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty members of the, of the London community attended. I was there, there were twenty-plus vendors, uh, HHSA, um, Family Healthcare Network, United Way, all giving out really great, uh, health-related resources, uh, to the community, so again, hats off to the staff for, uh, doing a great Healthy Tulare County Week. Kate's not here, Kate Born with our tobacco education, uh, did, I don't know if it's a wonderful, it almost made me ill, but she did a, a presentation where she had a pig lungs, actual pig lungs, and she inflates a, a healthy pig lung and then pulls out a, a smoking, I'd love to see that pig smoke, I don't know how they hold, hold the cigarette with their hooves, but, um, it, it gave a whole new meaning to smoked pork to me, but, uh, but the demonstration was really incredible and the kids there, their, uh, their eyes were, were popping open, so hopefully, uh, stuff like that, that helps, so that was a, a great week. Also, last Friday night I attended the Habitat for Humanity Birdhouse Auction, um, along with Supervisor Crocker, who's not here, but, uh, it was a great event, Wizard of Oz was the theme, everybody thought he was a munchkin, so it went well. Yesterday I had the Health Advisory Committee, uh, they, they went over the street strategic plan for, uh, that and, and there was a lot of good, that's a really good, I know you used to be on it, but some really good community members, um, and some good conversation. Also yesterday I had the Mental Health Board and the Board during the day had their, uh, retreat and a lot of the members of the Board, uh, talked later in the day at the meeting about what, some, some great information that they receive that would help them become better committee meetings. Supervisor Vanderpool said, the Farm Bureau Youth Leadership tonight, tomorrow morning I will have my first, uh, Board meeting for the Workforce Investment Board, so I look forward to that. Um, and then Saturday I will be at the Book Fest at the Tulare County Library in Visalia, reading a book. I have not decided on my book yet, any-
It's good you know how to read.
You got kids, I do.
Doctor Seuss, Doctor Seuss, Fox in Socks?
Yeah.
That's a real tongue twister, I'm just saying.
I was thinking Walter the Farting Dog, but I don't know, I have that one, that's a good one, so we'll see.
You're probably very well versed.
I thought you might stay with the pork thing and go with-
No, I don't know.
Green Eggs and Ham.
Green Eggs and Ham, Sam I am.
Supervisor, uh, Ennis?
I don't know, she might, she might try the Three Little Pigs.
I, I could, uh, but they can't huff and puff if they're smoking.
They puff.
They can puff.
I've lost control, all right, all right, you've had your shot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet, did attend the Farm Bureau Dinner last Saturday, uh, Saturday night at the Convention Center, was, uh, Supervisor Crocker, who Supervisor Crocker was in Washington DC with TCAG, uh, this week, that's why he's not here this morning, but, uh, and then Supervisor, past Supervisor Alan Ashida and Wanda, they joined us over there for, uh, that event, and of course, uh, Marilyn Ken Ashida was, was there and, uh-
Oh, it's not Ken Ashida anymore.
No, I'm sorry, you're not Ken Ashida anymore.
Right, right.
Right, okay. Anyway, that was, that was a fun event, that was a fun event, and then of course, uh, next week we'll be in, uh, Washington DC, that's short and sweet, so it's-
All right, thank you. Uh, I was not able to be at the event in London, um, on Thursday because I was a CSAC Executive Committee meeting where we were selecting our new executive officer, Matt Kate, having chosen to go, uh, on his own, and, um, I'm unfortunately not able to tell you who we selected because we're still in negotiating phase with the person to whom we've extended the offer, and we will be having actually a, a call meeting, uh, tomorrow to confirm that, but, uh, hopefully it's, uh, I'm, I'm very happy about the, the selection, we had some excellent candidates. Um, yes, thank you for talking about Supervisor Crocker, I don't plan to every vote to indicate that Supervisor Crocker is not present, he's not present, so we know that the votes are gonna be for something today, so there will be no, uh, no five member votes. Um, I will be attending, uh, this evening, the District Attorney's, um, Victims Quilt Ceremony, the, at the, uh, Convention Center, and, uh, we will have a San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority Meeting, uh, Authority Meeting in Fresno this, this coming Friday. I, I do plan on appearing before the Special Meeting of the Retirement Board, uh, on this Thursday, as on the, the major topic there will be the pension bond that the Board has approved. Uh, so at this time I've, uh, finished up and, uh, we'll move on to our next item, which is presenting a proclamation to adopt April tenth, two thousand and eighteen as the, as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County, and I believe Darla has a presentation to make this morning. Good morning.
Morning. Here's some flyers for the book festival. Didn't make it dark. Thank you, Chairman Worthy, members of the Board, Mr. Spada and Ms. Peterson, I'm honored today to come to the Board of the Supervisors meeting today to help celebrate libraries and literacy, and as Supervisor Sucklian just said, we are having a book festival on Saturday, I've given some flyers to the clerk, and, um, um, if you aren't able to come, please share it with your friends and family, we look like we're gonna have a really successful event. Um, I'm here today to, uh, also, we're going to be doing our Library Advisory Annual Report Presentation as well as the proclamation, so, um, I'm going to be introducing, um, our Library Advisory Board members, um, if you're in our Library Advisory Board, can you please Today we have members Elaine Gilden, um, Alex McDavid, and Erica Toodle, and Erica Toodle is our chair, and she, and she and David will be presenting our presentation today, so I'm gonna hand that over to them, and then we'll move into the, the literacy presentation and then to the proclamation after that, and thank you very much.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, so here's the agenda of what we're gonna cover in our brief presentation, we may not go into each one of these in much depth, but that's what we're gonna cover. Um, so libraries aren't just places to borrow books or study, they're also creative, engaging community centers where people can collaborate, use new technologies, and develop their skills and passions. Libraries have been evolving for a long time to meet the needs of the communities they serve. Resources like eBooks and technology classes, materials for English language learners, and programs for job seekers are just a few ways that libraries and librarians are transforming to, uh, lead their communities. The Tulare County Library helps lead our community by increasing access to crucial services and lifelong learning. Libraries level the playing field for people of any age who seek information, connection, and access to technology to improve their quality of life. So in our report today, we hope to share some of the specific ways our Tulare County libraries are helping to lead our community. So the Tulare County, uh, Library Advisory Board, um, works to, uh, advise and make recommendations to all of you about our library services. Some of the things we look at are the level of service, the hours of operation, legislation that would affect, um, the libraries as well as public concerns about the library system. Um, I will not read this to you, but this is the mission statement of the library, feel free to skim that. And then these are the core services, so just to highlight, um, access to a wide variety of information, customer service, literacy and education service, um, uh, services for children, adult literacy services, and educational and cultural enrichment programs and events. Um, so the, the Library Advisory Board is made up of one member from each district and then five at-large members. Currently we do have a full board, which is, um, we're really excited about that, and we meet every, uh, second Tuesday of the month at two PM. And now, um, I just wanna highlight a few accomplishments from the twenty sixteen, twenty-seventeen fiscal year, I won't read all of them, but if you, I just wanted to mention was, um, there's now high-speed broadband internet at several of the branches, including Visalia, Dinuba, Early Mart, Exeter, Ivanhoe, Lindsay, Orocy, Springville, Tipton, Three Rivers, and Woodlake. Um, two people graduated from the Career Online High School Program, so those are people who now have their diploma and they're ready, um, they're more ready for a career or for furthering their education. Um, two new branches opened in rural Tulare County, one in London and one in Farmersville, so that's a really great accomplishment, increasing access to the library for the people in those communities. And then another, um, interesting and I think pretty innovative program that the library has taken on is the Mother Read, Father Read Program, so in that program, um, moms and dads who are incarcerated can record themselves, uh, reading a book to their child, and then the, uh, child receives like a USB drive and the book, and they can hear their parent reading to them when they're separated, uh, because of the incarceration. So those are just, that's just, I think, a really cool example of how the library's really innovating to reach every member of our community. And then some statistics from the sixteen-seventeen fiscal year, again, I won't read all of them, but just a few to highlight, more than three-hundred-thousand people visited one of the library branches, volunteers provided over twelve-thousand-five-hundred hours of their time, um, to the library, and there's almost fifty-eight-thousand registered borrowers, and that includes almost twelve-thousand children age fourteen or under. So now I'd like to introduce, uh, Alex McDavid, uh, one of the members of the Library Advisory, uh, Board, and he's gonna give a preview of what's being accomplished, um, in the fiscal years seventeen-eighteen, thanks.
What are you hitting with this slide?
The spacebar.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Let's see, where we go here, spacebar, yay. Uh, the library has a newly updated website that I wanna highlight, I won't go through all of them, um, but please check that out, lots of good stuff. The, um, the second thing listed up there is a, um, it's actually the San Joaquin Valley Library System, which includes access to two million items from the libraries of seven counties, plus those in the towns or cities of Colinga, Huron, Porterville, and Tulare, um, and that's in all of our branches. Uh, there are eleven branches now actually connected to the, um, broadband internet and, uh, the CEN, I'm sorry, the C E N I C, where is that there, about halfway down, um, actually stands for the Corporation for Education Network Initiatives in California, which is a nonprofit corporation that provides high-performance, high broadband networking services to California universities and research institutions. And in addition to the broadband, we also have, uh, permanent Wi-Fi connections in, uh, currently ten branches, so that people can use their phones, uh, or tablets in the library in addition to the computers that are already there. There's also a Reading Beyond Bars Literacy Program for inmates that we do in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department, and the Career Online High School that, um, Erica mentioned a minute ago, all eleven of our scholarships for that program are filled. Um, we're pleased to see that. Let's see, um, among the goals, uh, the Board has visited in this, uh, previous year, um, the library's in Exeter, the branch is the, in Exeter, Farmersville, Pixley, and Dinuba, um, and we have plans to go to the All Pow Branch in Springville. And we've updated, um, the library use policy, the library meeting room policy, and will continue this year to update the internet policies for the library system. And, uh, we will be working with the local communities to make sure that the hours that our branches are open in their communities meet the needs of that community. And then we would like to, uh, publicly acknowledge the library staff for their dedication, Darla for her management and her management team for their leadership and, uh, unwavering commitment to providing quality services in a way that meets the needs of the library of the Tulare County communities. And we'd also like to thank the Library Foundation, the Friends of the Tulare County Library, and the Friends of the Library in Three Rivers, Lindsay, Exeter, and Dinuba, the Pixley Foundation, um, the Read With Me Leah Kamingo, uh, group in Farmersville, and the Citizens for Better London, um, the County Departments, the Sheriff's Office, the General Services, the CAO, HHSA, and HRND, and the Edison Foundation, First Five Tulare County, United Way, uh, and B. Reimer's Charitable Education Foundation and other donors. And just as a quick side note, I'm involved with a organization called the California YMCA Youth and Government Program, have been since I was fourteen, and, and very short notice, the Tulare County Fairgrounds, uh, provided us with a place to, um, host over five-hundred middle school students two weeks ago-
Wow.
For a model United Nations conference, and I wanna compliment the staff down there, they did an excellent job on very short notice, and it was a very successful program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you weren't aware, this week is National Library Week, um, Libraries Lead is our theme this week, because libraries lead in the transformation of our communities, so, um, wanna make you aware, and we're glad we're able to do the book festival this week as well. Um, I would like to introduce you now to our library program and literacy specialist, Edward William, and Kim Torres, to talk about our literacy efforts here in Tulare County. Um, Edward and Kim continue to grow our literacy programs to work closely with volunteer staff, Friends of the Library, the Foundation, and the library administration, including our Board. The results I have seen already are amazing, um, you'll be hearing about those from Kim and Edward, um, so I'm not going to start tooting their horns for them, um, I'm just really happy of the team I have, and you're just gonna see an example of, of two of them, and they're gonna also bring some people up that we're working with, thank you.
Good morning, members of the Board, I'm Edward William, I'm the literacy manager, I'm also librarian, this is Kim Torres, she's also with our literacy staff. The Tulare County Library's Read to Succeed Literacy Program has served almost ninety adults within the last twelve months, that's just within the literacy center alone, that doesn't include our jail program and our early literacy programs, that's probably about two-hundred altogether. We've worked to fight a literacy by improving reading, writing, listening, and speaking English by having our dedicated volunteer tutors and staff work with our learners nearly every day. Um, it can sometimes be exhausting, but it's very rewarding. With their hard work, students have worked their way towards reading their, their first book, or obtaining their high school diploma. Um, there, uh, we work around those, their, their specific goals. Every student's literacy story is unique, um, but it's not a struggle they need to carry on their own. Our passionate volunteer tutors and staff work with them, uh, every step of the way as they work towards those goals. Besides working with adults, we ensure that parents and their children receive early literacy training with our monthly early literary, early learning for families. I've, I've invited some of our tutors, um, volunteer tutors, and I have to say they're very passionate about what they do, uh, especially as they see the struggles with, um, with our learners. Um, I invited them, if they could please stand, I'd like, I'd like you to see who they are. Yeah, that was Alex that you met earlier, and, um, Paul Minehart and Vicky Gavel, I'd, I'd like them to say something briefly, um, but, uh, Kim, if you could say, if you'd like to say something briefly too.
Sure.
Good morning, it's a pleasure to be here, um, thank you so much, um, as always, I am just so thrilled to be a part of the library programs in Tulare County. Um, I do have to say Edward is an awesome person to work with, we make a really great team, where I tend to be like super over-the-top and into everybody's business, he is that calming force that everybody needs to have and go, "Well, let's think about that, and how's this really gonna look?" So I think between the two of us, we tend to have a really good balance, so I'm, I'm really thrilled that he's aboard and it's been a pleasure working with him, I like it a lot. Also, my boss Darla, she's phenomenal, I know I called Pete and told him how amazing my boss was, and I know that's kind of a freaky thing to do, but I do have an amazing boss, and one of the things that Darla's blessed me with is allowing me to do off-site programs, and our off-site programs tend to become a little unusual. Um, one, um, morning last year I rang up Darla and I said, "Hey, how about if we go into the jail and read books and tape 'em and then they can send them to their children?" And she's like, "Well, you know, let's see how this will work." And you know what, she got behind it a hundred and ten percent. She is so pro anything for the community, anything that's gonna benefit the community, the children, the adults, she jumps right on board and she is so supportive, it's, it's just amazing to work with somebody like that. Um, also, um, we got really excited and Darla gave me a ring and she goes, "Guess what, we're gonna open up a library in Pixley," and I'm like, "Yay, I love Pixley, that's such a great place, and it's just, we're gonna have a blast, there's so many things we can do there, and I'm so excited." So I got ahold of the community liaison and Darla's kinda like, "Well, you know, we don't have a building just yet." And as Supervisor Vanderpool knows, we're not gonna let not having a building get in the way, so I jumped on board with the community liaison and, um, uh, Superintendent, uh, Pilgrim, and bam, we got a, we got a whole bunch of programs running in Pixley already, and we are so excited, we can't wait for that library to open up pretty soon. So I too have several people that would like to present, so I'm gonna zip my lips and I will let Edward, I know, surprise. That doesn't usually happen, so I will zip my lips and I will let Edward introduce his speakers, and then we'll follow up with my next, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to introduce, uh, Paul, Paul Minehart, uh, if you could please, uh, come on up and briefly-
He can use the other, if it's easier to use the other microphone, that's fine.
Okay, I'll come up this way.
I'm Paul Minehart, I'm a volunteer. I volunteered first at the Literacy Center, and really enjoy it, it, I work with two students there now, and then Kim asked me to volunteer for the, the Books Beyond Bars Program, and let me tell you, Kim's really hard to say no to, in case you haven't noticed. But a little bit about me, my background and what has prepared me to do this, I was a naval aviator in the early sixties, and for forty years I worked in the paper and packaging industry in manufacturing, supervision, management, sales, and general management, so I've done a lot of hiring and firing. What I wanna say is just my impressions of the, approximately month plus that I've been going out to the jail every Friday afternoon, um, those guys out there are awesome, I'm really impressed by them, uh, obviously, you know, they're in jail for some reason, and some of them may be real good at talking a good game, but to me, they are, they are focused, they're personable, friendly, and they wanna learn, and if we can do anything at all to help them make it on the outside when they get outside, I'm all for it, and I'm really enjoying it and I intend to stay with it. One thing that I've been able to do, uh, naval aviators who train together and fly together, they're like brothers. I have, uh, a brother who was, went through flight training with me, his name is Robert Gant, he's a published author, very successfully, kind of a Tom Clancy-type guy, a lot of, uh, fiction and nonfiction. He has, with me, contributed a book to be used out at the jail, it's called The Intrepid, it's the history of the USS Intrepid, the aircraft carrier that's now in, uh, New York Harbor as a museum. He signed all of them, we've got them, we're gonna introduce them out there and start reading them with, and I think it'll, it'll add a lot of vocabulary to what they're learning, it's a little higher level than what they're used to reading. So, if you have any questions, I'm-
Well, thank you so much, Paul, we pretty, really appreciate your, um, contribution to this effort, and you are one of many that make for a better Tulare County, and so we just wanna thank you for your, for your efforts.
My, my belief is old retired guys gotta stay relevant, right?
It also keeps you, it keeps you healthy and alive, and we appreciate it.
Real quick, Paul is far from one of those old retirement guys, he's probably one of the most active people I've ever met in my entire life, but there's kinda-
Saying something.
Oh, I know, I do marathon. So, um, one of the things is about when we first started trying to get volunteers to go into the, um, Tulare County Jail, people were like, "Oh, uh-uh, no, absolutely not, that's a scary place, that's just for really, really bad people, and they're gonna be mean to you, and the prisoners are gonna hoot at you and be disrespectful," right? But that's the, the perception. I cannot tell you how far from the truth that is, the students we have are model students, and one of the things I love about Paul is when he came in, he's like, you know, after coming in about three or four times, he's like, "Those are really nice guys." I share that with the people that I come into contact, and one of the impacts of having volunteers within the jail system, it's creating that, um, community awareness, that people in jail are not necessarily bad people. A lot of people that are incarcerated when they are released, nobody will even look at an application, no one will even consider hiring them, but when you have volunteers like Paul getting his buddies to sign books and send them in, and he tells his friends and his neighbors about, you know what, these people are really nice people, they're dedicated, they're hard-working, they wanna change, they wanna make a difference, it makes the community more receptive to taking a second look at that application, and not just throwing it off to the side because they said that they've had some type of issue or problem. So I really value his input, so thank you so much, Paul.
Uh, my next volunteer tutor is, uh, Vicky Gavel, who can share her experiences as
Thank you for hearing me this morning. Um, I have been, um, a teacher in one form or another since I was fourteen years old, and been a tutor since that time also, in one way or another, I'm a retired public school teacher, and I've also, um, you know, I've volunteered, um, many, many places in many different capacities. Of all of my tutoring and volunteer experiences- Of all of my tutoring and volunteer experiences, my experience with the literacy center has been by far the most valuable to me personally. I cannot say enough for the center and the support that they provide and I can't say enough for... I have four students, all very different, with very different needs and wonderful people who are overcoming incredible obstacles because they want to be more of a part of our society because they want to be able to contribute and they're just very impressive people. So I thank you very much for having us here today and thanks.
Thank you.
Alex is our... I wanna have him say something as well. He's very passionate with the early learning for families program that we do and I'll let you say a little bit about it.
Thanks, just very briefly. There are a couple of programs that the literacy center does. One's the ELF program. I think it stands for Early Literacy for Families. And then there's the ELT, which is something similar. It's training, literacy training. So the ELF program is a once-a-month little kid book club where we have about eighty students a month in groups of twenty, four timeframes. And they come in, they're zero to age five. We sing songs with them, we read them a book, they go make a craft and as they leave, they turn in their name tag and they get a copy of the book. And it's just tremendous and we watch families go through and kids kind of, they graduate the month they turn five, but it's just wonderful to see that. And then the ELT program, we go out to, I think usually state-run child development centers and talk to the parents about the importance of reading to children from the beginning, the brain development, the impact that will have on their educational aspirations. And I recently was in Porterville, I've been to Dinuba with that, to Ivanhoe, several other places. It's just a lot of fun to go out and meet with some of the parents and talk to them about what it is they're... How important it is to start interacting with their children from birth. You don't have to wait till they can respond to you in a cognitive way. They're listening. Even if they don't know what you're talking about, they're hearing words. And I'm very interested in the prison thing, so let's talk about that. Anyway, there's a lot going on through the literacy center. It's a marvelous program. Sharon, who runs the ELT and the ELF program, is marvelous to work with and it's a real pleasure to be part of all of this. Thank you.
So of course, I wanna take just a moment and brag just a little bit 'cause that's kinda what I do best. I'd like to introduce my partner. That's Margarita. Would you stand up, please? Because there's somebody that has to help keep record and stats and data and be able to be, offer the programs in bilingual. I mean, she's amazing. The programs we're doing would not be going well if it wasn't for Margarita. So come on up here with us.
My name is Margarita. I'm gonna introduce Teresa Lewis, which is the community liaison in Pixley and we work with her closely, so.
Come on, don't be shy. You're reading and talking and volunteering and everything. You can come up here, my goodness.
I'm Teresa Lewis of the parent community liaison in Pixley. I work for the school district. I've been there twenty-one years and I've worn many, many hats there. This is actually my most exciting one because my job is to bring parents in to the school, try to get them to volunteer so they can help their children, especially in reading. When Kim came to us, we started two different pilots. One is called Read to Succeed and she brings books in. And this was really exciting because the parents actually opened up a lot to her. They actually wanna be there all the time when she's there. They learned a lot. Some of the words they don't understand. They go over the words. Margarita explains to them and they're actually to the point now where we're gonna take them into the classroom to read to their children. And the children actually try to read to them as well. And that's very exciting when if you know our community, which is small and very... It's a loving community, but it's really hard to get them to come in. Our second one we have is called The Book and Computer Club. It's, we're trying to get parents who also are having problems with their English, learning to do English. Some are trying to get their GED. We have some that are from Mexico that are actually getting their records from there to continue to be successful here in the United States. It's just so much going on and I appreciate Kim and Margarita so much because these parents have opened up so much to them and I have seen the growth in them. So I think next year will be even bigger because now the parents who have never even had a library card, actually have a library card, they can actually open up a computer and get on there and go to the library and know how to work it. So I really would love to thank Kim and Margarita because they have been so awesome. And this is one of my parents that I brought so that she can kind of let you know how it works there. Not that shy, she really isn't.
Hi, my name is Luz Hernandez. I'm a parent. I volunteer at Teresa's both school and Pixley. So yeah, we do enjoy everything that they do right there. We learned a lot, read, read to our kids. Now we're starting to go, we're gonna start to go to the class and read to our kids and other kids right there in class. That's what I got to say right now. Just kinda shy.
Teresa's also a volunteer as well. So she's amazing and she brings so much to the table. I kinda, I love this program. It's so near and dear to both of our hearts and so we would like to ask Bertha and Lieutenant to please come up. Bertha, please come up. You are amazing and you are just a driving force behind this program. Bertha's one of the people that truly loves her job. I thought I was the only one. I thought Margarita and I were. She actually loves her job too. And so it's so much fun when we get together because great things are gonna happen. You just start seeing sparks. We come up with ideas, we brainstorm, how can we expand this? What can we do? And so she is just an awesome person and we are just so thrilled to be on board with both of Lieutenant and Bertha. Thank you.
Wow, Kim. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, CIO, County Council. First of all, I'm Lieutenant Jones and I am the acting program manager for Sheriff Pudreau. As I took over for Sheriff Saragino, she'd already worked on putting this in place with Bertha. And as a guy that comes from an old security background, I went, "Are you crazy? This is not... No way." But as the sheriff says every day, "Be the difference." Figure out a way to be the difference. Get outside your comfort zone, get outside your box and let's do something to make a difference in the community. So what I realized is this program's not about just the inmates. The Father Read, Mother Read program piggybacks off our literacy program. It's not just about the inmates. It's about those children, those family members that get left behind during incarceration. So I brought it forward and we pushed it. And with Bertha and the help of the library, you have some very enthusiastic staff. Kim, really enthusiastic, gonna push this program forward. I believe we're going into our fourth cycle and I can tell you that I personally reviewed most of the videos going out and I am seriously impressed with the work they're doing. They are being the difference in our community. We are doing such a great job in that outreach. I'm hoping that this program continues. I see no near end for this program. Matter of fact, Kim is, again, very enthusiastic, pushing us every day to expand the bounds, so we will continue that partnership with Kim and the library because it has been so fruitful for us. And we wanna thank you, thank the library and thank the sheriff for this opportunity to let our program shine the way they are because without all the support, we are not succeeding. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for listening to our presentations today. I just wanna also tell you that we've had success with inmates who've left the program. We've had four approach us already, which is a huge success for us. So that's, we're gonna move to the proclamation. I'm so proud of my staff and proud of my volunteers and proud of everybody who works in this program, especially our learners.
Thank you, Darla. And I do wanna specifically thank the volunteers and the staff, the sheriff's office, the advisory board. I can remember we really struggled to have a quorum for an advisory meeting and the fact that it's all fully, we've got everybody there in place and everybody's showing up and the participation just shows you the success of this program. I didn't realize we were all gonna end up with a degree in Library 101 Science this morning, but it's been a great meeting and I thought about maybe not reading the proclamation, but I think it kinda pulls it all together, so I will take a little bit of time and I'd like to read this. Declaring Tuesday, April tenth, two thousand eighteen as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County. Whereas the Tulare County Library leads by welcoming all who seek access to information and education by partnering with libraries, literacy programs and other organizations to transform the lives of residents in Tulare County. And whereas it is these partnerships that have allowed the Tulare County Library to celebrate one hundred and eight years of service, including the eighteen years of Read to Succeed Library Literacy Program. Whereas exceptional staff and volunteers help our library and literacy programs by serving with a sincere interest in community service and a desire to assist others. And whereas libraries, librarians and library staff... That's a lot of library. Look beyond their traditional roles to provide opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with our patrons' needs. And whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities by offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds and promote inclusion. And whereas patrons and learners prove that equal access to information and education resources, including one-on-one tutoring, summer reading and early literacy, makes a true difference in the overall success of children, teens and adults learning to read. And whereas the Tulare County Library and the Read to Succeed Literacy Program receive support and funds from the state, county and local organizations to ensure continued service that assists the community's effort to address the learning and literacy needs in Tulare County. And whereas Tulare County is proud to, of the success of the library and the Read to Succeed Literacy Program acknowledges the transformational efforts of the staff, volunteers, learners and patrons, now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors declare Tuesday, April tenth, two thousand eighteen as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County and welcome all to visit their local library branch to take advantage of the many transformative services that are available. Signed, Dick Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shuckley and Steve Worthley and Mike Ennis. If you come up forward, we'll take a picture.
For a picture. Everybody talk.
Come on in the well. Seal behind us here.
Can you figure out a way to bottle up that energy? Make a little bit of extra revenue with the county. Come on in. We wanna make really a little better. This'll be my short... You know where you're at.
All right, on the count of three, if you'll look right here. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a couple of remarks. I just wanna thank Darla and all of the staff and certainly the advisory board. You can really feel the energy and it goes far beyond Kim's over-the-top energy. And you can see that you have some very dedicated people that make this happen. I know we've talked a lot today about libraries, but I know this is, the library department is kind of overlooked in our grand scheme of things when we're dealing with somebody, you know, who's as celebrity nature as the sheriff or, you know, all the other issues that we're dealing with in the county. But Darla, you're doing a fantastic job and I hear nothing but great things about the work that you're doing. And I do have to say, representing some of the most, out in the middle of nowhere communities and most removed from the urban areas of Tulare County, that libraries are in many cases their only resource in the community. You are right, this is how we can better our communities, this is how we can better the residents that we live in, that live in Tulare County, giving them tools that they may not have gotten in their childhood or in school. And they have a desire to get those skills at this point so that they can compete and be successful in our society. The whole community is bettered by that. So I think all of the volunteers, your dedication is tremendous and you're having a significant impact in Tulare County and I just really do thank you and appreciate all that you do.
Any comments?
That's it all.
All right. This is an action item, so I need a motion.
Don't realize how much goes into this.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Shuckley. Please press for votes and the votes are unanimous.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being here today and for all your assistance. And now we move on to a fairly significant event that we have every year, most enjoyable, I know, hopefully for the employees, but certainly is for the supervisors, and that's our service award presentations. At this time, I'll turn it over to our HR Director, Rhonda.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Worthley, County Supervisors, CIO Mike Spada and County Council Diane Peterson. And welcome to our employees and our department members who are here today. Today, I am very pleased and honored to be able to bring before you employees who are being recognized for their long service to this county. The Service Awards Program recognizes employees who have completed ten or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. We honor five hundred and twenty total employees this year for their loyalty, their hard work, their compassion and their great service ethic that they provide to our departments and the citizens of Tulare County. Awards for employees who have completed ten years of service will be presented in the Employees Department and there are three hundred and one of those ten-year employees this year. Today, a total of twenty-three employees will be recognized. Some of our employees received the award at their home and so they may be receiving a framed photo of, picture of what their award looks like. Others will be receiving their actual award today at the presentation. As has become tradition at this ceremony, we asked employees to share a little bit about themselves. Some are shy and we respect their request to limit their announcement. However, as I read a little bit about other awardees, you will hear that many are also good Samaritans and humanitarians in other areas of their lives and volunteer in their church, school, in the communities they live and for service clubs. Many have also developed special hobbies and talents that you will hear about. Honored employees, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award and to take a photo with your county supervisor. Some of the fragile awards may have boxes that you can pick up from our HRD representative, Desiree Schalkeford, in our lobby following the ceremony. So we'll begin this morning with District One and Chairman Worthley will present for Supervisor Crocker. So our first employee to be honored is Kevin Riggi with the fifteen years of service as the Fire Battalion Chief. So Kevin is not here. He may be able to attend next week. Our next employee is Sue Curtis, Senior Account Clerk with Child Support Services Department.
Yeah.
And Sue is honored for twenty years of service. Anthony Tony Bowland, being honored for thirty years. And Anthony is a Transportation Services Coordinator with Resource Management Agency. He began his career here with Tulare County as a road yard assistant, was an engineer, technician, one, two and three, and is now the... Technician 1, 2, and 3, and is now the Transportation Services Coordinator. He has his AA from COS. He enjoys spending time with his family and riding his motorcycle. He has been married for 34 years, has two daughters, and a three-year-old grandson. Congratulations. For District Two, Supervisor Pete Vanderpoel will present, and we'll begin with Dorretta Cox. Dorretta is being honored for 15 years of service, she is a Child Support Specialist 3. She started her career with Tulare County as an Extra Help and then became promoted up to the Child Support Specialist. She is a Notary Public Service. Um she enjoys her family and her grandchildren, and when she's not working or with her grandchildren, she enjoys reading and watching movies. Congratulations. Anna is being recognized for 15 years, she is a probation technician with the probation department. She began as a clerk, office assistant, and then promoted to probation technician. She is a movie enthusiast, loves to travel, and she designs custom apparel. Jimmy has served 15 years of service, he is a Traffic Control Worker 3 with Resource Management Agency. He enjoys softball, backcountry backpacking, and single-track dirt biking.
But the picture doesn't mean that much.
John Triste, Traffic Control Worker 3, honored for 15 years of service. He started out working five years in the Fiscal Department and then 10 years as in traffic control. And he says he enjoys softball with my homies. Elkie is being honored for 20 years of service, she's a Veteran Services Technician with She has also received her California Department of Veterans Affairs accreditation and a national accreditation in 2015. She is the proud grandmother of three wonderful boys, and I'd like to read this from her supervisor. A resident expert in benefits for our veterans and their families, a great ambassador for Tulare County and our stakeholders, says Supervisor Kenneth Crookshank. Nelda Sell. Nelda is being honored for 40 years of service to Tulare County. She is a Road Yard Assistant with Resource Management Agency. District Three Supervisor Amy Shuckley will present, and we'll begin with Beatrice Bracino, Administrative Aid with our Ag Commissioner Sealer Department, receiving 15 years service award. Beatrice started working with Tulare County in HHSA as a Self-Sufficiency Counselor and recently moved to Ag Commissioner's Office. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration, enjoys traveling, music, spending time with family and friends. Ruben works for our IT Department and is an IT Logistics Planner, receiving 15 years service award today. He is a local product, um having graduated from Orosee High School, and was also a volunteer fireman. He enjoys hunting, fishing, camping, and boating. Laura is being honored for 15 years of service. And brought her gift, is a Child Support Specialist 3. Um besides working for Tulare County, she also works for Coles and Substitutes on Fridays. She received her Bachelor's and Master of Arts from Fresno Pacific. She is very grateful for the past 15 years of my life working for the county and very grateful to see my five children grow up. Ryan is being honored for 15 years of service, he's an Administrative Services Programmer, Analyst 2 with IT. He enjoys mentoring aspiring software engineers at Friday Night Lab and an after-school program at COS. His hobby is pinball, and he will travel to shows as a repair technician, and recently he got to work on a new game prototype. Maria is being honored for 15 years as a Child Support Specialist 3 at Child Support Services. She enjoys volunteering and mission work. This year, she is planning a wedding for her daughter. Her supervisor Sheila Michael writes, Maria is a dedicated, hard-working employee who excels at providing high-quality customer service. Brian Boudakian. Brian is an IT Radio Installer 2 with our IT Department and is being honored for 20 years of service. He started at the radio shop and says he's been there ever since. He enjoys radio control cars and drones, as well as drag racing as hobbies. Probation Officer 2 and is being honored for 20 years of service. He enjoys spending time with his family, traveling, and camping at the coast. And he says, I'm only halfway through my career of 20 years. Lisa is a Child Support Specialist 2 and is being honored for 20 years of service to Tulare County. She is a graduate of San Joaquin Valley College and received her BA there. She enjoys singing, playing basketball, and camping. And this is what her supervisor says. When I think of Lisa Hamilton, I think of "Happy." Yes, the song "Happy," she always has a smile on her face and enjoys spreading joy among her peers. Lisa is a hard worker and loves to celebrate everything. She is an asset to the Department of Child Support Services, says Susan Totti. Cheryl is a Probation Account Supervisor and is being honored for 20 years of service. She has six grandchildren whom she enjoys spending time with, along with two fur babies. Congratulations. Lawrence is being honored for 20 years of service and he is an IT Manager. He is working in Security Administration, and he received his Electrical Engineering Degree at Cal Poly. He enjoys woodwork woodworking and do-it-yourself projects, and he grew up in Farmersville. Sandra is a Staff Services Analyst 2 with Child Support and is receiving her award for 25 years of service. She enjoys gardening in her yard and is Grammy to Riley and Taylor. District Four Supervisor Steve Worthley will present to Tanya Lack.
We go for quality, not quantity.
Tanya is being awarded 15 years of service, she is a Probation Institution Supervisor. She enjoys riding ATVs in the Mojave Desert to look for Jasper. Congratulations. Supervisor Mike Ennis will begin for District Five, presenting to Clancy Johnston. Clancy is being awarded 15 years of service and is a Child Support Specialist 3. She enjoys quilting, and the light of her life is her granddaughter Ramsey. Alexander is receiving 20 years service award and is a Senior Account Clerk at Child Support. He enjoys outdoor activities, has three children, and will be getting his first grandchild in June.
All right.
And that concludes our formal ceremony for today. We will be returning on April 24th um with the remaining honorees for this year.
Thank you, Rhonda. And before everybody leaves, we uh it's customary for members of the board to make a few comments, and uh so at this time, I'd like to turn to Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, thank you. You know, coming out of the business world, uh it's uh a business is only good as the employees that work there. So, thank you everyone for what you do on a daily basis. County is so diverse, I mean, from law enforcement, health and human services, RMA, the roads, uh it it's a very, very, very uh complicated county really, and has probably one of the biggest payrolls in this county. So, thanks again for all your efforts, uh we appreciate all you do. The longer you stay here, hopefully the happier you are, and that's what we want you to be at Tulare County, is to be happy employees. So, thank you so much for your service, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Supervisor Shuckley?
Yeah, I just would like to echo that, it's always enjoyable to to meet folks and just basically you're the ones who do the work in the trenches and and make us look good, so uh thank you very much for your dedication to the county.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. People, 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 you know, Mike Ennis said it, the organization is only as good as the people that work within it. Uh it's always great to recognize those who have been committed to the organization for as long as you have. Um I mean, in my district alone, we we recognize uh Nelda who's been here for 40 years. Uh that's incredible, I don't even I can't even talk about that length of time because I don't know what that length is like. I could talk about 30, 40 years, but I can't talk about 40, but um you know, i- it really is incredible and says a lot about the organization when uh you can provide a place to work and uh you have people like Nelda that are as dedicated to the organization as she is. Um it shows all of you who have are maybe being recognized today for 15 years, uh that you can make it all the way to 40, and I hope you do. Um all right, this organization is going to continue to get better because of the longevity of the employees that we have working for it. Um you know, a a lot of employees that are the age of my colleagues to the right, including Supervisor Shuckley, and are all getting close to retirement age, and uh a- as they retire, uh you hope that there is going to be uh institutional knowledge left within, but that institutional knowledge will come from mentoring, uh and from those of you with experience, sharing that with uh the younger generation so they too can carry forward uh the dedication and the expertise that you have brought to the organization. So, I am very grateful for your service, I look forward to being here and recognizing you in years to come, uh and I hope that you continue to love where you work and and help to make Tulare County a better place, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Well, I I do want to take a couple of minutes, this I've been involved in this for the last 20 years, and I all I can say is, wow, what a transformation. Uh I'm s- it's I've seen people come up and 20 years ago, it seemed like it was a very different approach to this, the people's attitudes were different. Uh what I see today, I am so proud of Tulare County and its and its staff, I mean, you you people are are just amazing to me. And and our opportunity to honor you today in a small way is really our privilege, and we hope that you enjoy it. I just I just love to hear people cheering on their their comrades, their you know, it's just it's just great to see. I I really feel like people believe that when they belong to an organization like Tulare County, they belong to a first-class operation, and we're moving in the right direction, and you all are leading us. So, thank you so much for the work that you do, and as Pete said, you know, 20 years and is a long time, many of you have been here for the length of time that I have, as we honor you for 20 years, many of you have been here longer. Um I I just thank you for your service, and please, continue to bring that attitude of uh joy to your workplace, share it with your with your workmates, and and you know, you are leaders in your in your workplace because just by your longevity. So I want to thank you again, you all have a great day today, we'll take a little bit of a recess right now, so you'll have a chance to to get back to work. Thank you. Okay, we're having such a great time this morning. We will now move to our consent calendar. Public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
It's not Mikey.
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning during public comment on items which are not on our agenda but are in our jurisdiction, or invite to come forward, and if the sheriff has something you wanted to say to us, good morning, Sheriff.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. To our CAO and County Council, good morning. Um I wanted to take just a few minutes of time this morning to express truly my concerns in reference to SB 54. I want to bring to the board's attention that I, as the sheriff, I am responsible for public safety. I am responsible to do everything that I can to keep the citizens and the community and the people who live here safe. I'm here to say that I have deep concerns that SB 54 has placed the people who live here in danger. I want to say that out front, I am not talking about just the legal citizens of the people who live in Tulare County, I am talking about the people who live here in Tulare County. I want to make that clear. This statement is in no way in regards for uh immigration enforcement, this statement is in regards to what SB 54 has placed the sheriff and law enforcement into in not being able to reach out to its federal counterparts. I currently have a gentleman in custody who has been deported three times, who the district attorney has filed homicide charges against. I am unable to reach out to our ICE federal counterparts to make them aware of this person. Now, prior to this, we in fact did reach out, and they are aware, and there are a list, as you will hear people say, of 800 different crimes, that we can reach out to our reach out to our federal counterparts. I'm not suggesting or arguing for even just a moment, the local resources should be used to round up those who are here for whatever reason illegally. That is not my concern, and should not be the concern of those sitting in the board today. But what should be our concern is that we are, our hands in law enforcement are now tied. As you see across the state, many city, local and county officials have become incredibly concerned with the restrictions placed on their law enforcement where our elected positions' primary responsibility is for the safety of the people who live here. I have personally met with Hispanic leaders here in our county. I have met with people within that meeting who are actually living here illegally. And what they told me was this, sheriff, we believe what you're saying is what should happen. I'm not looking to round up innocent families, and I have to repeat that. I have to repeat it because I don't want the message to be taken away from this public statement today that the sheriff opposes those who are living here. That is not what I'm saying. But what I am requesting, what I am saying, is that within recent days and coming into the future, I will be asking this board to take a serious look at what legal avenues that we can take for the protection of the people who live here to help support the sheriff who was elected to provide that safety for those who live here. SB 54 negatively impacts several different operations within our county. Here's my main focal point. For those people who are here illegally, robbing, pillaging, raping, committing homicide, committing burglaries, gangs who are committing violent crimes against others, we have to be able to reach out to our federal counterparts, and we are restricted. I want to make the statement today that I have written a letter to each member of the board, which you will receive in your emails today, if you have not already received it. I, as the sheriff, must be able to reach out to every law enforcement partner in the nation and not be restricted by any means in able to provide that public safety. Attorney General Becerra, I have personally met with him, and I have told him my concerns. I have personally met with the governor of the state of California, and I told him how I sit and force issues here in Tulare County. And those issues were, I'm not looking to round up people who are here illegally. That's a bigger problem that needs to be handled at a bigger and higher level than mine. But what we do need to do is for those committing those egregious crimes, I have to be able to reach out to the appropriate authorities for those people to face justice at every level. The governor looked to me and said, sheriff, you make some very good points, but this legislation makes for good politics. And we must send a message to Washington DC. Things have become clouded, clouded to the point that local law enforcement is not able to do its job. And I, as sheriff, cannot sit idly by without expressing my concerns for the people who voted me into this position. And I realize today is just for public comment, but I do want to say that my responsibility is first and foremost to the people of Tulare County and to those deputies who are there enforcing those laws. I ask that in the future, I ask that in the very near future, that the board take into consideration options for their sheriff. Options, whether it be legally, as to a lawsuit, as many other cities and counties are taking forth. I don't know the exact answer, but I am asking that we, as a county, look out for the people who live here and give law enforcement the tools necessary to make sure that the people who live here are safe. And with that, I'll conclude, and thank you for your time, as you will receive these letters in your email again.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to let you know also that prior to your coming today, I had already been in consultation with county council, and that, and we are exactly doing what you're saying, which is looking at our different options. And the normal procedure for us to be to follow where there's potential litigation would be to meet in closed session before we would come out and take public action. But I want to assure you that the county is aware of the issue, and we are, we are proceeding.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that, and I appreciate you taking the time to seriously look into this issue. It's a major concern for law enforcement and just, not just for me as the county, but for all of our local counterparts within the law enforcement family. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments during this public comment period? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and we will go then on to our consent calendar. Item number 10 will be pulled, and we do have an addendum, a letter of support for Assembly Bill 2649. Are there any things that are handled separately by board members or by the public? No, I obtain a motion?
Mr. Sheriff, if there's nothing to be handled separately, I would move for the approval of the consent calendar, less item 10.
I'll second that. Have a motion by supervisor Vanapool.
Including the addendum.
Seconded by supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you. That will now take us to our untimed items. And item number 18 is a presentation by the district attorney's office regarding the forensic investigations unit. Good morning, Mr. District Attorney.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. As your district attorney, it's always a pleasure to come before you. And I just wanted to take a, a quick moment before I introduce the guest speaker and really, an expert in our office, to tell you that the reason we're here today is, again, I made the commitment to you that ongoing, we would take opportunities that we could to present the good works that the men and women in the office of the district attorney are doing, and to show you, this is in a kind of a unique and distinct way, that your support fiscally and otherwise to us is being put to good measure. Let me introduce real quick our, our guest speaker, but before I do, as, as our investigator's talking about our forensic unit, the question may come up, why, why are we doing this? And the reality is, this is why. Every crime that we're seeing now, and I should pause for a moment. Supervisor Ennis, this is called a smartphone. I know there were times when you and I would just meet and we would talk, but today, there are people that don't talk face-to-face. They send, they send communication by letters, photographs and symbols instead of having face-to-face conversations. In a way, that makes our job in law enforcement that much easier. But the reality is, just about every crime that we're coming across these days has, has a computer, a phone, now our vehicles as well, and our, our instructor will talk about that. So with that, investigator Benitez with our office, he's been in law enforcement over 24 years. He holds a bachelor's science degree and is working on his master's degree currently. He's a certified forensic computer examiner, and he is, he holds a master instructor certificate. He teaches for the Department of Justice in their cyber crimes training program. And it's good that we go through this exercise in-house because I did not realize this until I got his bio. Apparently, he's on the San Diego Regional Training Center group as well. I've not been invited to go to San Diego with you, Mr. Benitez. He's also obviously worked for COS, teaching there as well. And finally, before I turn it over to Tony, let me tell you that May 1st, our office has our Law Day open house. We do it every year. If we strike an interest today and you'd like to see more of this, when you come to our open house, we'll make the, the lab, if you will, available to you. And supervisor Vanapool, if you would like us to search your phone as a demonstration that day, we'll be happy, happy to do that. So with that, let me introduce.
You know, you get to choose between a county phone and a personal phone. So, you know, we'll go with the county phone.
With that, let me introduce you to criminal investigator Tony Benitez.
Worked great. Never a good one that tech guy has problems with technology. I'd like to thank our district attorney, Mr. Ward, for that introduction. Thank you all for the opportunity to come speak with you this morning. About our digital forensic unit, Mr. Ward mentioned a few accomplishments that we've done, that I've done here in the office. And I have to say and proud that those accomplishments are only made because of the commitment that our office has made to make sure that our digital forensic unit is the best at what we do. And I'm really proud of that. But I just want to take a few moments this morning to talk about technology and some of the exciting things that we're doing at the lab. And with that, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, right? Right now, connected. Mr. Ward made, made some comments about cell phones and, and technology and other sources of technology. In this day and age, technology has exploded. We use technology in every aspect of our life, whether it's our personal life, our professional life, we, we want to remain connected. We keep our most intimate data on these devices, our personal information, our private information, our work information. We kept so much information on all these devices, the amount of information available on just every of these, every one of these devices depicted up there is just voluminous. There's so much information. And we use all this information as evidence, obviously, at the district attorney's office. Where we're going now and the push right now is that we want all this information in the palm of our hand. We want it available to us wherever we may be, whether we're at work, whether we're at home, wherever we're, if we're at the road, wherever we, we want to be able to connect from our phone to our computer, to the cloud, to work. Connectivity is the big thing right now. That's the push. So much so that Apple, we're all familiar with Apple, Apple file systems and how their, their devices work have been in place for 30 years. It's worked fine for 30 years. Well, within the last several months, they decided it was time for a change. They completely overhauled their file system, so much so that now all of their devices linked together, they're all synced together. So, you're, all your information can work from, whether you're dealing with your iPod, your iPhone, or your computer, the data is synced across the board. That's just one example of where this is going. This is the evidence of today. So what I like to call the evidence of tomorrow, some of you may have heard this term, IOT, referred to as the Internet of Things. This is where law enforcement needs to be prepared for. We understand how we can collect evidence today, but this is where evidence is going tomorrow. It's kind of here now, but it's in the infancy stages. And what I'm talking about is smart homes. That's just one aspect of it, right? We, I'm sure you, a lot of you have that technology already in place, whether it's your doorbell that captures who's at your door, and you can see it on your phone, whether it's your refrigerator, whether it's Alexa, whether it's Siri, what, you name your technology that you have. All these things have one thing in common, and that they're network-connected. It's that connectivity. And one thing that we like about all these devices is that they all store data. They all have evidence that we could use to investigate these crimes. And it's, people who are committing crimes oftentimes think, okay, if I just destroy my phone, that evidence is gone. If I just delete it, that evidence could be gone. But oftentimes, they don't think about these things. The fact that the minute you walked into your home, your phone connected to Alexa, well then now we can place you at that house. We can place you at that location. Just small little bits of pieces of evidence that we can start using for crimes, for crime investigations. And this is where evidence is going. So I kind of mentioned that there's a ton of evidence available amongst all these different devices. And these are just some of the ways that we at the district attorney's office are using it to successfully prosecute our cases. I often hear, I present all over the state, as, as Mr. Ward mentioned, I teach for the Department of Justice. Every now and then, I run across somebody who says, I am off the grid. I don't use any technology and I'm completely off the grid. And I challenge them every time. I will find you. You're on the grid because it's, if it's not you using your own technology, it's a family member, it's your aunt, it's your uncle, somebody who's posted you on social media, tagged you somewhere, you're on the net somewhere. So, we all leave what we call a digital footprint, right? As law enforcement officers, it's our job to find that digital footprint because it's there. And we're using this digital footprint to show that, how these suspects are using technology before a crime happens, during a crime, to show that they were actually at a location, or after, who were they communicating with? And these are just some of the things that we're using it for, for intent and motive. What was going on? What were they doing? Location, this is a big one. Of the smartphones, we keep talking about smartphones, they all have one big thing, location services, right? GPS data. We're able to track an individual down to just a few feet with GPS data. Date and time, timelines are always important. And the digital evidence is a great way, because it's, can you change the data on, on a device? Yeah, you can change the data, but most devices are synced with the satellite that doesn't change. So we can always get an accurate timeline, which works great for us. We can show connection with the victims. We can show connection with or association with the suspects. There's a lot of different ways we use this evidence, including communication. That's probably one of the biggest ones. Was there communication? Was there text messages? Was there emails? Was there some type of third-party application? Because that's big these days, right? We all have some type of social media, and that's being used a lot for communication. So with these services, this isn't just what we do just for the Bureau of Investigations. We also serve every agency within the county of Tulare. And I'm proud to say that we've served almost every one of these in this photograph, but we have made our services available to them all. So you can imagine, just with our own caseload, we're busy. But with the commitment that our office has made to, to make our services available to the entire county, yeah, we figured we need, we needed to beef up our lab. And this is our digital forensic lab. This is just a few of the photographs. I'm not a photographer by trade, but I learned that angles means everything. Because for those of you that have been in my office, I think some of you have, you know it's not that big. It's pretty small. But Mr. Ward has promised that we're going to get a bigger lab, and that's where we're One of the challenges that we're having right now is encryption. I'm sure every one of your phones is locked with either a pattern, passcode, PIN code, right? As, as I mentioned, we have so much information on our devices that we, we want to protect it. And that's just one of the challenges as law enforcement officers that we deal with. And one of the ways that we deal with that is we're writing warrants for cell phones and computers to bypass that lock via biometrics. What I mean by biometrics is a thumbprint or facial recognition, because technology is there now that we can write a warrant and unlock these devices. The issue with this is that we can't just simply go into our evidence room and pull out a phone that's been there for six months and try this process. It doesn't work. Biometrics has several intricacies in place that usually, it's a 48-hour limit. We have 48 hours from the minute we seize that device to start this process and going. Bless you. If not even sooner. I've seen it as, as, as quick as four hours. We need to get on this ball, on the ball as soon as four hours. So that means we have to develop our probable cause, write the warrant, get it to a judge, get this device seized, and then get it to a forensic lab to get this processed, all without it getting remotely wiped. It's a lot that goes into it. Some of the other things that we're, other services that we have available to the agencies in the county is that we're one of the only agencies that can conduct advanced forensics. And as you see in these photographs, what I mean by that is ISP, JTAG and/or chip off. And what that means is, in the top right image, ISP, you, it's hard to see in that, but there's actually wires that are soldered to the circuit board of the phone, and we're actually extracting the data directly from the memory chip to our computer that way. And if that fails, we actually remove the memory chip from the phone and extract the data directly from the memory chip. That's just another way to bypass that encryption. Because there's so many levels, so many different types of devices, not one method works for every device, if that makes sense. So this is just one of the things that we're doing as far as advanced forensics. Another thing that we're talking about or doing is, Mr. Ward mentioned, vehicle forensics. Digital evidence, if we get a locked device and, and it's locked and there's nothing that we can do to bypass it, none of our advanced forensics can, because some of these devices now, like the new Samsungs, yeah, the new Samsungs, are encrypted at the chip level. So even if I completed that advanced forensics, it's still encrypted. So I have to start thinking outside the box. Where else could this data be? Well, if they connected their phone to their vehicle, the data is synced to the vehicle. And it's something that we don't think about. And I'm proud to say that we're one of the only agencies in the county that can actually conduct this type of forensic investigation. I think the closest one from us is probably Fresno that has this type of capability. But everything is there, messages, call logs, contacts, it's all there. Just something to think about. Anytime you rent a car, don't connect your phone to the far, to the car. It's all synced. Another thing that I'm proud to say is that our agency is probably one of the only ones that's capable, trained and experienced to respond to cyber attacks. Crime scenes aren't always physical. We get attacked online, and this is something we need to think about. Ransomware is one of the biggest threats that we have right now, and it's not a matter of if you're going to get hit with ransomware, it's a ma, it's a matter of when you're going to get hit with ransomware. And I'm proud to say that we're capable of responding. And I'm proud to say that we're capable of responding to that type of investigation. Breaking the unbreakable. I've talked about Apple quite a bit, I've talked about encryption quite a bit. We've all, we're all familiar with what happened in San Bernardino and the fight law enforcement has had in dealing with Apple or with any commercial company to try and get a backdoor, if you will, to unlocking cell phones. There has been technology in place for a while now to try and get Apple devices unlocked, but it's one company, you have to send the device to them and it, they charge anywhere from $2,500 to $5,000 per device to get it unlocked. And then you still have to get it back and then conduct your, your examination. That's just a lot of money that most agencies can't afford. And you don't even know what you're getting. It may be nothing and you're spending $5,000 to get that done. As the slide mentions, in 2017, over 7,000 phones were unable to be unlocked. I can't even imagine how much data or evidence was left unanalyzed because of that. I know in our own office, we have several devices that are sitting, waiting for the opportunity, waiting for the technology to catch, to catch up with us so we can unlock these devices. It's gotten to the point where people just know, law enforcement agencies know, if you have an Apple device, there's no sense in taking it to a forensic examiner, they can't do anything with it. Well, I'm proud to say now that we're going to be one of the only agencies that I know of in California that are going to have the capability, the technology, and experience to unlock any Apple device. And we're going to have that. So I can only imagine how many cases this is going to help solve, how many cold cases this is going to help open up again, how many inactive cases this is going to help with additional leads. We don't know. It, we just, this is going to be huge for us and we, we're going to have this capability soon.
Just a quick thought for the District Attorney's budget, maybe turn it into a revenue generator. He's always needing some money, so you might be able to outsource your-
I, I toss that out there, but, but with that, this is going to be huge. It's going to be great. It's going to be a game changer. I know it is. But I invite you all to come to our lab. If you, as Mr. Ward said, if you haven't been there, come on out and we'll show you what we're doing, the exciting things that's going on, and, and where we're heading with our, with our lab. Mr. Ward?
Tony, thank you. I, I have toured your facility there and I was just very envious, actually. You know, they've got some neat stuff there. We don't seem to have those things here yet, but maybe we'll get around to getting some of those things here someday. But yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
If we visit, are you able to extract from our phone without us knowing?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll come by.
I joke with people when they walk in my room-
I'll come by. No.
Well, I, I would just make a comment that, you know, kudos to the department for really trying to be at the forefront of technology and not be one of those other agencies that's looking around for ways to convict crimes and to produce evidence. You're at the forefront of that and your expertise is really what leads that. I, I know District Attorney Tim Ward is not as technological as you are, and so clearly there's someone from within that's leading this charge. But, but really, I, you know, to be an instructor for the Department of Justice and to do all that you do, you are to be commended because that's a very, very valuable skillset. The DA is lucky to have you and we as a county are lucky to have you because you're helping to keep our community safer too.
Thank you. I was lucky enough to be here today. I'm actually teaching head and back right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Tony, appreciate it. Anything else, Mr. District Attorney?
No, thank you.
All right, very good. We will move on then to item number 19, Request for Resource Management Agency to introduce and waive the first reading of amendments to Ordinance Code of Tulare County, PZC 18-003.
Go from talking about technology to septic systems. What a change.
That's right. Well, it's high-tech also.
Well, it's a tap.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members, CAO, County Council. Mike Washam, today for your consideration are some amendments to the ordinance code, just the waiver of the first reading. This is associated with the LAMP project, so I'll just briefly go through this. The LAMP is designed to protect the groundwater surfaces and, surface water bodies from contamination through the proper design of septic systems. Developed minimum standards for the treatment and ultimate disposal sewage through the use of septic treatment systems in non-sewered, unincorporated areas of Tulare County. On February 6th of this year, your board adopted the LAMP and it was approved. And the LAMP approval was subject to changes and approval by the Central Valley Regional Water Control Board. The revisions here in this, under consideration today, are essentially a table that's from the LAMP with minimum setbacks. They want it included in the zoning ordinance, so it's basically, and I had mentioned this at previous meetings, so that's what essentially this is. No changes were suggested to Section 4, which had a minor change with wells at the previous adoption. Last week, the Central Valley Regional Water Control Board approved the Tulare County LAMP and, subject to these changes in the ordinance code. So that is really the report. And the request is to introduce and waive, approve the, the posting of the summary ordinance as five days before the public hearing and to set the public hearing for April 24th.
Any questions, comments? Again, I know it, a tremendous amount of work went into this, getting us here today, and appreciate the staff's staying on top of it. I know it's very time sensitive and, and I'm so grateful that we were able to come up with a passive system for the most part that will be more than adequate for Tulare County and not create a real problem for, for folks out in the countryside, having to put up with a, a different type of a active system. So at this time, entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you.
Now we will go on to item number 20, which is receiving a report from the Resource Management Agency on the closeout of the Yoko Ranch project. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board, CAO, County Council, Sherman Dix, RMA. For you today is a final update for the Yoko Ranch project. For some reference, the, back in November of 2006, the board entered into a MOU and a reimbursement agreement with the Yoko Ranch Company to work on the proposed Yoko Ranch project. That project encompassed about 36,000 acres in the Sierra Nevada foothills, in the unincorporated area of Tulare County. The idea was to build a new community there that would have up to 10,000 new homes and roughly 30,000 residents. On January 31st, 2018, KJ Boswell Company, who's the owner of the Yoko Ranch Company, notified County of Tulare, or notified RMA that they no longer wish to pursue the project. We immediately turned around and notified vendors associated with the project and staff to cease work on the project. And at this time, we've collected all the invoices, paid those, with the exception of some that need to be approved through this request today for Michael Baker. And that's through March 17th, 2018. Just some project stats, wrapping up the project. Over the 10-plus years of working on this project, there was 13,000 hours of county staff time dedicated to the project. Some of the highlights developed were area development plans, fire management plan, development agreement, preliminary financing plan, most of the environmental impact report. Total of $5.5 million was paid to the County of Tulare, so there was no net county cost to the county. We were reimbursed for 100% of all the costs associated with working on the project. Because of the significant amount of work done on this project, we've catalogued it and filed it appropriately in the event that the applicant wants to reinitiate the project at a later date. So with that, a request of you today to receive this report, approve payment of invoices to Michael Baker in the amount of $28,638.79 retroactive from October 1st, 2017 through February 22nd, 2018. Find that the board had the authority to have the work done and that it was in our best, the county's best interest to do so. And approve the refund of the balance of funds on deposit with RMA in the amount, with the exception of $3,000, we'll hold. And I've spoken with the Boswell Company and let them know we'll hold that amount and return it to them within 90 days of today's approval. With that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer. Before that, I would like to point out Chuck, I'm going to get his name wrong, but Chuck, who works with RMA, he was the lead on this project and, you know, put, his focus was on this project and had a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work on the project, so. With that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
I, I'd just like to comment, I really have a question. I talked with Jim Boswell, he called me to let me know about this before it was publicly announced that they were going to be pulling the plug on it. And he was very complimentary of Tulare County, the RMA people and how they work very closely and effectively with them. And it was, I, I'm sorry about this. I mean, just in terms of the outcome, I really feel like this would have been a great benefit to Tulare County, providing upscale housing that, you know, in an area that, you know, the 37,000 acres, but the development would have been in a very small number of those acres and most of it would have been in permanent conservation easements and there were just, there would have been a lot of benefits to our county, I believe, had it been built. But it's a, at the end of the day, it's an economically driven situation and, and the cost that they would have had to realize for the sale of every residence just did not, the numbers just did not work out. So I can appreciate why they did what they did, but there again, I just, I am, I am sorry about the, the ultimate outcome. And I think Tulare County is the, you know, we have a lot of, so many great things happening, economic development, so forth in the county. This would have been a great, I think, shot in the arm to Tulare County that we've lost. But, you know, the land is still there, times may change, economics may change, maybe this would come back in a, not, not during my tenure, probably by, maybe, maybe in Pete Vanderpul's tenure, kind of crocker. But anyway, thank you so much, Sherman, for bringing this forward. Are there any questions or comments?
No, I just thought it was a, a great project, but I think the scope and magnitude of it was so great and the cost so great that, like the chairman was saying, cost per unit would be almost prohibitive, so.
Well, timing is everything and, I mean, who would have guessed the past 10 years here how tumultuous the real estate market has been and the changes with, you know, water management in the county, so.
Jim specifically pointed to the water issue, as far as water and agriculture, which is their primary course of business, as being one of those things that they really needed to focus their attention on that. And I can certainly appreciate that.
Sure, just, just to comment, I, obviously, there's some really great things that came out of this in terms of compliments to RMA. I mean, the Boswell Company is one of the premier developers and businesses in the state of California. And to get that kind of compliment from them about the Resource Management Agency is a real compliment to the men and women that work in the department. So definitely take that message back. But I, I also want to say that I do think there's a lot of compliments to be made to the Boswell Company. I mean, this project's been going on for, for many years and over $5 million have been spent on this project. And, and, and there's not a lot of developers out there that would, if they spent $5 million on a project and the project was never built, we would probably be left holding a big bag waiting for some cash. But the fact of the matter that we're not coming out of pocket any, any money hopefully, once we get all this taken care of, that we're here to approve today. But, you know, I, I think that says a ton about Boswell as a company. And, you know, we do have it on record, should it be reincarnated sometime in the future, but real compliments to both sides on this deal because I think that everyone can leave with their heads held high and especially at RMA. So, and many thanks to the Boswell Company for being a good developer to work with.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Vanderpul. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our regular scheduled meeting. We now have items in closed session, council.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Item F is off calendar. Items A through D will be heard in closed session and I do expect an announcement out. This is Deanne Peterson, County Counsel, reporting out on closed session. Item C, the Board of Supervisors authorized the defense of individually-named defendant with a reservation of rights in Guillermo Limas versus Tulare County and David Nugent, case number VCU 273192. The adverse parties are Guillermo Limas, Guillormina Limas, Julio Limas, and Luis Limas, a minor represented by Tanaz Hashemi, Nazoli Hashemi, and Legal Access, Inc. This case involves general negligence claims from a traffic accident involving a former accounting employee. The rule call, call vote was on motion by Supervisor Vanderpul, seconded by Supervisor Amy Shucklian. It was a 4-0 vote. Supervisor Crocker was absent. This concludes the reporting out for today.